Six thirty, I call this meeting of Manchester Wednesday Select Board to order. Call Brian.
Yes.
And Anne is here.
John is here.
And are there public comments on non agenda items? The chairman has no report.
I did want to suggest an action item to add which I didn't see here. When we changed the resident sticker by law et cetera at the town meeting. Yeah, we took an action to hold a public hearing to affirm the list and I want to make sure we do that. Okay. Is that something that can be done in our next meeting Greg or do we need prep for that or?
Yeah, little prep and we should, we should post it for a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay, so the January second meeting maybe?
That'd be fine. Because it's, it's the off season, we don't have residents obviously anyway, so we have a little talk.
Hi Anne.
This is James.
I have your candy.
Aw darn it.
I have a comment on the water thing.
Yes.
Worth line. This is the only place we're talking about water, I think tonight, right?
Yeah, we don't have a lot of agenda.
No, yeah, so this is just, just, this is just an update. There is a cost calculator that has been built that I have worked with that you will all get to work with in the next few days.
Awesome.
It works, you can put your input in cubic feet or in gallons and you get your answer, current rates and proposed rates. There is also a document which has been put together that is a work plan. Of I don't know, three or four, anyway, this will also be, also be available to people to take a look at, which is kind of a timeline of various, various things. So, and that'll be available, I would say, within the next, within the week.
Awesome.
Sure. So, and the mailers did go, I guess, out with the, the water bills. It was a mailer with the water bills.
Is that true? Have people got electronic water bills?
Electronic water bills?
I don't, I don't get it.
No, it's a ma- it's a mailer that went, went out in the mail. This uh.
Water conservation.
Let's say water, water conservation.
When did those go out?
Fifteen. If you got your water bill.
Um, I don't get.
If, if you got a mail, if you got it in the mail, you got this.
So I'm just wondering, for those of us who just get an email.
I didn't know anybody just got emails.
You want to know?
Yeah, I, well, I didn't get anything in the mail. You know, you sign up for the website, I'll have to double check, but I did not get anything in the postal mail. I mean, it certainly could be the post office's fault, I mean, not, not saying. But. Definitely have not gotten a water bill.
Sue Taylor has not indicated that there's any electronics. She sends out the whole list to a mailing house. And it goes.
Interesting.
Is your water bill through the condo association?
No, no, personal.
Yeah.
And I pay it online, so I don't. Yeah, I, I, I don't think I. Yeah, just double check that because I can't remember the last time I got to pay my water bill.
Last time you tried flushing your toilet.
I, it works fine and I pay my bill on time, but it's all electronic, so.
I did get one not long ago myself, so I.
It's, it's in my file, one red now.
I have one of those too.
Okay, um, is there any, are there any other action items? That anyone wants to add? I would like to suggest that at our next meeting, we have a, an executive session to discuss leasing property. And if we decide to have a special set session to talk about.
Oh, yes, the government's project.
I want you to think the governor's project is going to take two hours.
Oh gosh, no.
Hey, um, then I think we go over again with her agenda. And I think that.
So I moved at the select board open the alcohol license amendment hearing for a change of ownership interest in the all else, in the all alcohol on premise license at eight Water Avenue, Manchester, Mass, held by Aspect Athletic Club LLC.
Who got in first?
That's up to, that's, that's up to Debbie. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yeah.
Okay, um. The request for change of ownership. Great.
Really straightforward, we have both, John and Jessica online. Current owner and the proposed new co-owner. So fairly straightforward, doesn't have any other.
Already have.
I did look at that box specifically, as both were checked.
Yes, I did.
Anne, I do have a question.
Yes.
If I may, it's in terms of previously held interest in, in alcoholic beverage license. You already have one with the for the athletic club. So does that not, should that not be entered in on that number five, under number five?
Number five is.
Previously held interest in an alcoholic beverages license and she has, so, but I don't, is he going to be, if you're going to be on the alcoholic beverage license, then number four should be filled out for that. Otherwise, if he's been affiliated with anything else, number five should be.
Talk to the licensing.
Is this not interest in an alcoholic beverage license?
Do you, sorry guys, there's like a slight delay on the Zoom. Do you want, do, it's just nice to see all of you again. It's a little weird to do it via Zoom, it's easier in the room, so I apologize. Debbie, I know you have all the paperwork in front of you. This is literally just an amendment because we're going from a single member LLC to a partnership. And when we got all this set up, you, you know, with trying to keep the Mac going and everything, that it was a little bit of an oversight. We're, so we're just amending it. So are you saying potentially the way that it was filled out, that there's a box that should have been checked versus another box, which is something we could easily amend? But that is purely the intent, so that you understand, you know, we're doing everything by the books and dotting all the i's and crossing the t's here. Well, yeah, he, and my husband Josh, who, you know, has never had any alcohol license before this, so that you guys are aware.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, my, my, my point is that, that with number four, it specifically says, does any individual or entity identified in question two, which would be the husband and applicable attachments have any direct or indirect beneficial or financial interest in any other license to sell alcohol, how alcoholic beverages? Now, I, I don't.
And that's marked no, and I think Jessica just said that he hadn't.
Correct.
But Charlie, that, that is your question whether or not Jessica having previously held, is that the question you have?
But she's holding it now, she's not previously held.
It's associated with this license directly, it's not another license.
And we can confirm with, with the ABCC, but I believe, I believe this is appropriately filled out.
Okay, alright, now if.
But I understand the question.
Yes.
Okay, just, I just don't want to go through all this and him be omitted from the license because it doesn't, number four doesn't say he has an interest in it.
We'll follow up with the ABCC.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm, that's all the questions are, I had.
Thank you, um. And I have a motion to approve, no, to end the evidentiary portion.
I move the select board to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay, I think I would like a, a motion to approve the application for amendment subject to clarification of the question on numbers four and five.
All right, I'll move the select board to prove the change the ownership interest in all, in the all alcohol on premise license at eight Water Avenue. Here in Manchester, held by the Aspect Athletic Club, subject to the, any amendment associated with number four.
Second.
Brian got that one? Ready to vote? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
I think you're good to go.
Um, move to close the public.
Move to close, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian second.
Right. Yes. Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John said yes.
Thank you very much, um, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
I, I've worked with my husband for a number of years, working together can be interesting.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. We're, the next item on the agenda is the coastal stream team interview with Christopher Cohen. Cohen is here. Would you like to explain your interest in coastal streams?
Uh, yeah, well, ever since I was a little, I, I grew up here in town. And I've always been, uh, you know, into fishing, especially fly fishing, so having, you know, native brood trout in the stream that we have right here has always been pretty, uh, it's really an important thing. And I also think that, you know, wetlands and, you know, making sure that we protect our wetlands that we have left is very important, so I, I'd like to, uh, you know, become a member.
Any questions?
Uh, have you spoken with some of the folks on the, on the team?
Yep, I've sat in them, I've sat in a few meetings.
Okay, so you have some familiarity.
Yeah.
And you also, you, you also served on the Harvard Advisory Board at one time, so you have.
No, I'm still on the.
Are you still on the board? Okay, so you know what town governments is.
I do, yeah.
Great, well, thanks for raising your hand.
So, yet now you're involved with all of the water.
Yes.
That one. Let's go.
Let's go.
Becky, do you have any questions?
Of course I do. Hi Chris, how are you?
Good, hi.
Uh, thank you very much for stepping up and getting more involved in terms of water within town and around it. Do you have any, would, would you be comfortable recusing yourself in any situation where there might be a conflict of interest?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think you're a great candidate for this.
Thank you.
Well done.
Ready to eat your candidates, it's hard to turn that, is, are we prepared to vote on this tonight?
I am.
Yeah, okay. Um, I would make a motion that the select board appoint Christopher Cohen to the Manchester Coastal Stream Team for a term to end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Okay, Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Great.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you so much. Yep. The next item on the agenda, which we're not supposed to get to for another five minutes, is the special town recap.
Would you like a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Meeting ready to vote? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian, yes. Anne says yes?
John, yes.
That was a minute.
Spoke too fast.
I can give you a short liaison update from the school committee meeting, which I went to after our forum, our Q and A session. And heard their discussion of the proposal for a, ought to put a, a operational, independent review. I can, they received the statement of work that night. It's four pages long or so. They found it difficult to understand and interpret at that meeting. Um, and discussed at considerable length. The feeling that I get is, is that they would like to go with a Department of, I want to do a secondary education, which has the event of being free, so the fact that Manchester didn't fund it won't matter.
Did you say clarification, did you say secondary education?
Elementary and.
Oh, elementary. So the whole.
It's, it's pre K through twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's a part of the Department of Education, but it is an independent organization and they're, one of the things that they do is evaluate school districts and compare. It, it would probably be a good review that shortcoming would be that it, it's unlikely to be done in time for this year's budget. And at this point, I'm not sure that anything could be done under the issue. Which is kind of too bad, which is too bad. Is there another liaison report that?
I can speak to. They won't have a, I don't get a report on pickleball. There was some discussion of suggestion made to play to residents only and they're going to take that.
Uh, other than that, the pilot water meters, I think the last one went in today. That would have been like twenty five of twenty five. And these folks are up and running with their apps. There've been a few people that have leaks. And of course, one of the.
It's complex already.
Excellent, that's.
This is one of the, well, I guess you have to plan for that, the DPW, when to put these in, we're going to get calls and they're getting calls. So they're collecting information and there'll be a, an FAQ, I think, that will be put together to catch at least the top ones so that DPW isn't running around checking toilets. So we'll, we'll see how it goes, but it's going and yeah, there've been two or three so far, so.
Where did the, where did the pilot meters go? Mostly in people on the high end of water use or?
It was Chuck wanted the cross section, so it's cross section of geography, volume that you're using, the type of hookup. Whether your interest is strong in technology, or at least you're interested in apps because an important part of this is, you know, that we get feedback from the apps. And if you're not going to take a look at that from time to time at least, that's, you know, that's, that's, we're missing feedback in terms of deciding whether to go with vendor A or vendor B. So, it's all gone, but there's one, yeah, one user in particular, it went back and forth for a while and solved the problem. So good.
Becky, do you have?
Um, planning board is meeting Monday, I'll be there for that. And that's it for now.
Um, I'll just mention on FinCom, they met on the eighth and they reviewed, spent a lot of time discussing, obviously the prep for town meeting. Um, but then they did have some discussion on the capital budget. Talked about the DPW proposed DPW building and it was part of the facility's master plan. And they agreed that the geotechnical study needs to happen regardless of, on school street. Regardless of what we think we may or may not want to do about the DPW building, so they were all in favor of that. They did ask, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they want more information on the like kind of an overview on the water main improvements. We know we've been replacing pipes, but they'd still like to know, okay, out of, you know, X number of miles of pipe, what percent complete are we? Like, how much more do we have to do? Cause that'll figure into the overall capital plan. It's not just the buildings we have to worry about, right? So they, they had some good discussion on that. And then they also talked about the PFAS funding, they spent some time talking about that. They'd like to see different options, you know, what they want to clear outline on some of the options before advising us on what they recommend. That sounds fair.
Yeah, and Chuck has that material.
I think we're close enough after six fifty five for the special town meeting recap. Greg, are you prepared to lead off on that?
I'm happy to, sure. So overall, been very smoothly in terms of the logistics. Signing people in went very smoothly, there was never a big backup despite a, a large crowd, we had what, forty, fifty people, give or take? What were you, yeah. And so thanks to Diane and the crew of, of workers she had, I think that all went very smoothly. Obviously, we had the staff crew with the electronic voting devices. And my suspicion is it really wasn't the hookup and the receiver issue and communicating back to the, to the main computer. Um, so we will try, we will get to the bottom of that. Diane was able to speak to the company today, they had a series of recommendations to make sure that we had it set up correctly. Alan Wilson has assembled, you can speak to this, he's assembled some residents in town who are expert in all things computer and radio waves, so that can troubleshoot it further. So I'm confident that we will get to the bottom of, of what did transpire. And we, we had, it was, was a very different problem than what we had when we were in two different rooms. So it wasn't a repeat of that issue. Um, and we had a couple of successful meetings in the interim, so we know the system works. There was something that went awry in the setup, with the receiver and the computer. But we will, we will continue to troubleshoot that. Prepare for the, for the annual town meeting. I, I thought the citizenry participated and had good discussion. On the articles had good pros and cons, and I thought a, a good, I thought it was a good affirmation of what town meeting can be and should be. Um, people participated, everyone was able to be heard. Couple of questions got called a little earlier than I would have thought, but that's prerogative of the electorate. Uh, we got through it in, in, in shorter order than I think many of us thought it was going to. So that was all good as well. Alan, as usual, did a superior job of, of preparing and running the meeting. As, as he always does. He, he's on the call as well and can, can elaborate a bit more on the troubleshooting of the electronic voters, voting system. So I think as a general review, that's sufficient, I thought it went, thought it went well overall.
Does anyone on the board have comments before I ask Alan?
No, I just, I think that Alan pivoted right, really, really well. I think as soon as the machines went, uh, the voting machine went down, I think the, uh, the plan was two nights, the higher plan on two nights, so to get out of there at nine thirty was a tribute to Alan and his decisiveness, so thank you.
Yeah, my, my observation would be where, where there's broad agreement on certain issues, cards. It goes fast.
It goes.
It's fast, it's faster than the. But if you have something that's close, you, you know, you, you have to have, have to have that. And there were a couple, there were a couple of articles that were like that.
Those are great. So I wanted to thank Alan and Diane for kind of the safety improvement. They, they worked out for us who were on the stage, it was very much appreciated, so thank you for that. If we do find ourselves having to rely on more manual counting at other town meetings I've been to, you know, they use the clickers to do the, the counting, so that's, and when you need to do a close vote, that might be the big backup. Computers decided, yeah. But all in all, I thought it was very well, well organized and, and attended with a good discussion.
I, I have a question, do, do we pay each time we use that Diane or, because I know we own the system, correct?
Yes, there's a, um, thank you, there's an annual maintenance fee of a thousand dollars to have this.
Okay, just that, an annual fee regardless.
It's a maintenance contract.
Like everybody, thank you Alan and Diane, I, I think it went very smoothly, very well, we had that one bit of a snafu, but for the most part, it went really well, but I think the, the civil tone throughout was just really nice. And so I think Anne, you and Alan set that up to be that way, so thank you. Um, but I, I do have a question about the team which has been gotten together to oversee the electronic situation. I have had two people reach out to me. They're a little uncomfortable with Chair of Select Board's spouse being involved. I just, I, I think that's something that needs to be the concern needs to be considered. And I don't know what specifically the concern is other than that.
Since this is Alan's committee, I will let Alan speak to that.
Well. First, let me, let me thank all of you for the kind words about my conduct of meeting. Um, I appreciate that very much. I agree with everyone who said the quality of the debate was excellent. Um, and, and people did maintain their, their traditional civility, and I'm grateful for that. I like to use my gavel as little as possible. I also want to thank Diane for a very efficient and smooth check-in process with that number of people. It, it could have been something different, but she handled it very well and we had no, no backup, no issues there. As you know from my email, I have appointed this a subgroup, a small group of four people to figure out what has.
figure out what has gone wrong with our electronic voting system again. I'll come back to the difference between uh this, this event and the one a year ago, cause they were completely different uh, uh causes. Um, and so far as we know. But um the, the individuals, as you know, are Jim Starkey, Ali Spence, Kurt Melden and Bob Moffett, who runs our AV system. Um, I've in my email to you all, I outlined their qualifications. I will have a letter in the cricket this week telling the public who they are and a little bit about their background. Um, and I think they're very well qualified in both software and radio transmission expertise to figure this out. I think it's also important that we, that I, not we, I let the voters know that we're not just sitting back and hoping this doesn't happen again. It's really important right after town meeting that we get out there and let people know we're gonna figure it out. So that's why I'm, I've appointed this group and that's why I'm gonna have it in the cricket so that people understand that. Difference between this year and last year. We don't really know what happened this year, that's the point of this group. But, but last year, what happened was, we were, as you know, we were in two rooms with two different laptops counting the votes in each room. The vendors employees ran the system at that time and the, the connection between the two laptops ran through the vendor's remote server. And Jim Starkey investigated that and found that the um server was programmed to timeout the link between the two laptops in very short order. So that by the time we finished discussing each article, the server had cut the connection. And that's why we couldn't combine the votes, we had to count each room separately and add them up manually. We know that wasn't the case this time because we were in one, one room with one laptop. So we, we're dealing with a different problem and we haven't figured that out yet, but I know we will. Happy to take questions.
If, if I may add a comment. Running the votes through an external server is extremely insecure. And that should not have happened. Gives us a point where somebody could introduce.
Yeah, it is, um unless it's all encrypted, which would make it run even slower.
It wasn't.
Yeah, then that is a potential point of entry. Um, the other thing that can happen is, you know, load I don't know if they load tested it so that can it handle the volume, et cetera, so there's lots of problematic things that you know, that type of architecture could introduce, but.
And if I could.
That team will look into all of that.
Yeah, and if I, if I could, just Madam Chair?
Yes, of course, please.
Um, I just want to go back to Becky's um comment about Jim's um being on this group and being your husband. I don't see any remote uh conflict or infopriety in that. He's not getting paid for it, he's acting as a volunteer and he has worked on our electronic voting, voting system assisting Diane and me from the beginning. Um, he knows it probably better than anybody else in town. Uh, so I don't, I don't see any reason why anyone should question that.
Anne, if I may?
Becky, please.
Um, I would just thank you Alan, that, that is very clear. And um I would say that if there are further concerns, um if anybody has further concerns, they can either reach out to Alan, Greg, or me, I suppose, or Anne, well, no, me.
Yeah, I, I've, I've appointed this group, I'm happy to, to talk with anybody who has a question about it. You can feel free to refer them to me.
Okay, thank you Alan.
I, I also want to say thank you to the four people on this team because they're very well qualified. They're, they're all busy, um and they're, they're determined to find the answer.
Not to that point, not to Alan's point, I, I, I don't see a problem. You know, there's no policies, it's not, it's not impacting policy at all. There's, there's no, there's no political agenda that's ever been figured out.
Are there any other questions on the um special town meeting? Is there anyone online? Anyone here? Okay. We're running out of things to fill in.
Madam Chair, if, if, if you will permit me, I'm going to sign off.
Of course.
Have, have a good evening all. See you soon.
Thank you very much Alan, since this month.
Alright, my pleasure always.
Since there doesn't seem to be a large online presence. I think you could probably go forward with the Northeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council membership.
Oh, uh, you guys got my memo and I sent on the twenty-fifth. On October, just to summarize it real quick, I guess, on October twenty-third, uh us, Rockport, Essex uh met with the uh Executive Director of Nemble, I think they, they call it in regards to uh joining uh their agency or their council. Uh Greg was in, in attendance along with the uh town administrators from Rockport and Essex. Uh, so outlining my memo, I guess, um we're one of three Kban communities that are not involved with that uh, with that entity at, at this point. In the past, we, we never joined uh them because of the staffing issues that we had. If and once you, you, you approve it as a board, we, we have to uh uh have one point seven officers uh affiliated with it, which is ten percent of our overall full-time staff. Um, however, myself or Lieutenant McCoy could sit on a board or a committee and, and have one person uh assigned to one of the units that is listed on page three of that uh handout that I gave you. Um, so with that, I think we anticipate uh probably with the one point seven officers, including myself, about thirteen point six hours a month that we would have to uh contribute in regards to training and meetings. Uh, which would work out to about that in overtime if we had two full-time staff members, but I'm only looking at probably one full-time staff member, which would probably be at about four hours for training purposes. And then on top of that, it would be call-ups for other agencies that would use their services.
Kathy, yes. So thank you for answering in advance one of the two questions, I guess. It's at the point where you can read my mind and that's scary, so. The other question I had was it, uh, the membership commitment area, that's where I was focused on page four. So the mutual aid agreement that it mentions. What, what don't we already do? Like if, you know, one of those towns that already belongs to that organization and needed mutual aid, there was a regional event, what, what, what don't we do today?
So what we would rely on is the state police.
State police.
State, state, state police and, and uh by joining this, we would rely on uh Nemble to come in and especially I would see this helping in our Fourth of July festivities with uh instead of us calling in and paying for outside details, this we would call in them in advance and they would, we could arrange as much staff as we needed, that we thought we would need.
We'd still have to pay that staff, wouldn't we?
No.
No.
Those communities pay those people.
Oh.
So that's part of, that's part of our fifty-five hundred dollars a year.
Oh, okay, that's interesting, that's nice.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's why I was hoping to jump on boards sooner.
Yeah, cause I was basically looking at the, the cost and, you know, answered the question on overtime, we'd be paying five thousand that we may offset that with some of the
Services.
Services.
And I, and I go back to Chief Conley when they, they had a missing person
Right.
uh, a while back and uh that was one of the things that he really, it really resonated with him that uh by the morning, they had like a hundred and fifty officers on scene to search for this person.
Yeah, in general, these, these partnerships are very helpful, so I just wanted to.
And we already do have a MOU or a mutual aid agreements throughout Essex County.
Okay.
In case we have to go out like regular officers have to go out and uh perform duties and like you say, Essex or Rockwood, but this is, this would be something on top of that, almost like an insurance policy.
Does it include things like investigating forms? So?
Uh, yeah, I, I answered one of my, one of my questions there and I'm glad to hear that uh personnel can support us as needed.
Yeah.
What kinds of, the other, the other uh aspect of this is that there is various equipment that you have access to.
Correct.
This is a small town, we don't have lots of different things. For example?
Uh, mobile command center in case we have a serious incident where we have to run a command center offsite. They have a, the unit that comes in and we can run our communications, et cetera. And personnel, personnel would be the biggest thing.
Okay, understood.
Yes, um same here, you answered one in advance, so thank you to that. On the fifth page, under the application process, it did mention um potential union concerns. How so?
Uh, just it would probably be um how we would pick the person to uh be involved with the, with which Nemble unit we uh decide um to go forward with, but uh I've already spoken to the union, they're, they're a hundred percent on board and we'll work with them just to come up with some sort of selection process.
Thank you, um and the, and you know, I, it definitely sounds like a positive. I just want to make sure we know what we're getting into and it looks like you've done a thorough investigation. Uh, my other question is, when it talks about mutual aid, the, the commitment to the mutual aid. Does that mean at any time any of the communities involved could ask us to come out to help? Is that how that goes?
That's correct, yep, but it would have to be specific to uh whatever unit that the, our officer would be assigned to, so simply say it's a motorcycle person, then they had, someone has a large funeral, they rely on Nemble to handle that funeral with a motorcycle, so that person would have to go out uh and you know, assist with that.
And in addition to that then, or further along with that, with the mutual aid, is there are there caps at which we've done our mutual aid for the month or anything like that, or is it that just if the need arises, we have to meet it?
If the need arises, we, uh, we have to meet it, but there are, there are caps, I don't think that's listed in this uh handout that, that I gave you, but they have to meet, I think it's at least three call-outs a year.
Okay. And so when we get called out for mutual aid, um what are we doing to cover home?
Well, that would only be if the officer was off duty and available, obviously if they're working, then uh they wouldn't be, be required to respond. So I bet Manchester is number one.
Excellent, thank you Todd very much, thank you Anne.
I, I, I'm gonna, gonna ask one more time, just, just to make sure I understood. You, you went over all of the numbers and it went right in one ear and out the other, could you just do that again?
So um on page page five, so, so we have seventeen full-time police officers. So we have to give ten percent of our uh workforce or, or are committed to, to this program. Uh, although, like I said, Lieutenant McCoy or I could sit on a committee or a board.
Okay, you, you don't, you're not talking about ten percent of the police force is a hundred percent devoted to this?
No.
Okay.
No, no, only, only ten, ten percent, so that'd be one point seven people.
One point seven people? And it's a question of going to meetings?
Meetings, trainings and call-outs.
But that's would be far from the forty hours or thirty-five hour, whatever a week.
Yeah, people are beating.
Okay.
Some, some might say, but it might not even get called out.
Okay, so there were one you had one point seven people who were identified as being part of the organization.
Correct.
Other people can be called out when there's an emergency.
Yeah.
You know, if, if, if there were some marine emergency you could take our safety boat.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
One more question, sir, um since this is not a cost we planned into this year's budget, um I, my question, I guess, is for Greg. Are there would this need to be approved at a town meeting, or do we have it in this funding in some bucket that we could use to join the association?
Right, so it'll, it'll be prorated for the year, so it won't be the full amount. Um, so most of me have half of that cost, and so yes, I think, working with the chief's budget, we're able to to absorb that cost.
That's part of the reason I brought it forward so quickly, is number one was the Fourth of July is coming up and also I think we can, we can, we can do it within FY twenty-four and I've already uh put it in ahead of time for FY twenty-four.
Are there other questions from the board? Or anyone else?
Yes. I moved the select board approved joining the Northeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes?
None, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you Chief, thank you Lieutenant.
Is there anything short in the town administrator's report?
Uh, yes. So just a, a quick update, um, before the uh pro, process. As, as folks know, that is under appeal to the state's appeal board, the HAC Housing Appeals Committee. And there was a sidewalk done for the state panel on November eighth, it was um very well attended, there were a lot, lot of citizens uh at the parking lot area making their opinions known. Um, but everything was handled very well and mercifully. And the sidewalk itself was limited to the parties um that are um at the table for the appeal. And so the applicant had laid out uh various stations along the way to point out different features, um both the town and the town citizens group, which is the other party um to the appeal. Um, will, will have an opportunity to point out uh various concerns um about the project in terms of environmental impact in particular. The, the general steepness and difficulty of, of developing that site. So the, it was a couple of hours uh sidewalk. The applicant has since filed their pre-file testimony. Uh, the town will have until early, uh, early December to file our pre-file testimony. And the uh town council is working with some of the experts that we have hired to help us present um the town's case. And so that is progressing and those, that, that material will be filed by that deadline. And then the, the citizens group has a further deadline to, to submit their materials. Uh, both the town and the town citizens group, along with NECT, have been um coordinating the uh, the testimony that is being filed and be presented. So this will all gear up for a hearing, uh the, the March fourth will be the first date of the the, the start of the hearing, um that'll likely be here in town. And then subsequent uh hearing days that week will likely And then subsequent, uh, hearing days that week will likely be, be in Boston. And once the hearing is concluded, it'll probably be a good year before a decision is issued. Right? So, well, spring of twenty-five is when I would expect, when we have the decision from the HAC. I would expect regardless of that decision, that that will be appealed to the courts. Be my guess. Um, so I think this is, this has got a ways to go. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a bit of a long, long haul to get to a final resolution.
Can you explain who the ten citizens group is and what their standing is in this?
So, um, ten citizens, the ten folks who, who put in to, to have standing, uh, they were, they were granted standing. Uh, they are opposed to the project. Uh, they did not grant M A T C full standing. They granted them the ability to observe and, uh, can work with the ten citizens, but they themselves as an organization do not have standing. Um, so typically, um, the HAC does not grant standing to third-party organizations. They typically want to grant it to others or concerned citizens in the community. So that's what they did in this case. So that's, that's where things are. Like I say, it's, it's a, it's a long, it's a long haul process and, um, the next, um, the next real date that people may be interested in would be that March four, hearing, which will start the hearing process.
Is that open to the public?
It is open to the public. Yeah, people won't be able to comment, but they can certainly observe and listen. Uh, we're, we're working on it.
It will be hybrid.
Not sure. I don't believe so. Um, I don't believe that first hearing will be, they may continue in Boston under hybrid. I'll, I'll have to double check.
Any questions from the board?
So also need to, um, look at, uh, dates, look at your calendars. So there's a desire to have a joint session with the finance committee to focus on, on capital. And one possibility is to have you join them at their meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Sure.
So that would be a meeting from this Wednesday.
Is there any reason why they can't join us on one of our meeting days?
That is possible. That is possible. We're talking about that.
Yeah.
So, so, so if that doesn't work, then that's, that would be plan B, which is fine. Uh, your next regular meeting will be December fourth. Um, there, there's also a desire to have a special meeting to focus on the governance project. And I, I gotta put out a few dates, seventh to eleventh to the fourteenth. We could, we don't have a lot on the fourth yet.
I don't think so.
I, I thought I said I had got the governance earlier, so we probably should have the, um, executive session on lease issue on the fourth.
On the fourth, right.
Is there any reason that we can't have the joint FinCom on the fourth?
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest. Yeah. We can check with, uh, with the finance committee to see if that, that even worked for them.
Okay, pending their comment then, December fourth.
Right. So for the, the, um, December seventh, actually hoping that that'll be the time where the MBTA task force has the presentation from the MIT class. We could meet earlier. That would typically be at six thirty. Or also have the seventh and the fourteenth Dallas possibilities. And again, if, if this is easier, you can do that through emails. We can do that.
Prefer working on that. Okay.
And then, um, on the eighteenth, we would have a joint meeting with the finance committee to present the preliminary budget. And that's when all of you get your, your notebooks and I give an overview of the, of the preliminary budget. Tease us up for the, uh, January, February review process.
Yes, that brings in a one, uh, action item. There's a discussion on, um, the town's taking over, uh, private, private launch service.
Um, yes.
And I'd like, I'd like to have a chance to talk to that before we get into the whole budget. So perhaps that should go on the board.
Yeah, that'd be a good topic to go for.
Yeah. Okay, I think, go ahead.
I was just gonna finish up, or if you want to move on, that's fine.
Please.
So just, just lastly, I was going to just give a quick update, um, um, the, uh, the community center. Um, uh, uh, actually, folks know that the vote is approved, um, authorizing you to enter the lease. Um, negotiations are, are continuing. Um, there are some a few challenges being worked out between the two private parties and assuming those issues are resolved between the two private parties, which really does not involve the town, assuming that they are able to work, um, those issues out, then we, then we will be able to proceed with discussions and, and hopefully finalizing a lease. But we, we need to sit tight a bit and have, uh, have the two parties work out a few of their issues first.
Becky?
I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, given, um, how the vote went at town meeting. But I, I feel if that's, if that's Greg's suggestion or recommendation, that he's the closest to the situation. Um, I guess my biggest concern is I just don't want, um, the town once again, being put into the position of being, or, or being perceived as the bad guy.
Well, I guess that's why I was phrasing it the way I was phrasing it. So that, uh, it is really, there are some legal issues that, that need to get ironed out between the two parties before, before the town can entertain the possibility of a lease. So it really is not in our hands. And, uh, and I think both parties fully, fully recognize and appreciate that.
Yes, and, and if I may, Anne, um, the, the, the the biggest stumbling block that some, I guess there's some people, um, seem to think is that this is going to be purely about the community center and it's, you know, we're, we are trying to help, but the community center will not be the ones to be in any, to be pulling strings. It's, it's a situation that, that they've gotten into. So, okay, I, I guess that's all I have to say. Sorry.
Yeah. So in order, again, in order for us to enter into at least, there, there has to be some clarity, um, uh, the legal standing of the building and, and ownership. And so that needs to get resolved. And then we're, if that is resolved, then I believe we will be able to move forward. And, and it would be, uh, the intent is for a lease to be signed between the town and, and HPA, the Arbor Point Association.
And that would discuss. I guess, thank you for that, more carefully worded.
Yeah.
Um, I think it probably fair to say that the town is anxious to see the community center succeed.
Yeah, we, we, I, I re- I remain optimistic that there's, there is this win-win opportunity here. And I, I'm, I'm hopeful that that'll, that'll be the result at the end of the day here.
Thank you. I think we can move on to protecting drinking water and watershed to both. We have appropriate for company from the group. But to explain what this is about, we have read your letter of course and understand. But for those who may look at this recording Sunday, if you guys can, have you explain it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
We'll need to speak up a bit to make sure Helen can hear everything.
You're welcome to move the chairs around so that you're looking, you can see the screen at the same time.
Well, this is the effort that has some significant historical roots. Meaning there was a conversation back in the nineties when Helen is chair of the with Gordon Gavitt, uh, President Carlberg, probably at that stage, about, um, feasibility and methods of protecting, you know, a hundred and fifty-five acres that Gordon owns, that's part of the town of Manchester, and that is primary watershed for our reservoir, gravel park. And, uh, those did not produce any fruit. Uh, there may have been some others in the meantime, but in two thousand fourteen, David Lumston and I from the Concom went and spoke to, uh, President Hammond, no, President Lindsay at stage, and, uh, had a very cordial conversation that again, didn't produce any traction. I think both times the college said that they were in the midst of long-range planning, which obviously can be an ongoing thing and therefore weren't ready to make any commitment. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, as, as stewards of their institution, they were looking for commercially viable, financially remunerative solutions to that land. So, uh, industrial or office development, uh, some kind of housing that would, would pay them a considerable sum unsuccessfully, I should say, because in the meantime, uh, various, um, developments were considered there, including New England Bio Labs, which ultimately moved up to, uh, Don Bosco and Ipswich. But looked very hard at that parcel because it's a good size, a great location, one twenty-eight, fine street and whatnot, and concluded that it couldn't be developed, uh, economically.
My impression, I'm recollecting into this, came in front of town meeting, the town meeting turned down. A change.
Uh, a town meeting vote to turn down a
vote that we went by and afterwards subsequently, um,
Athletic Book Distributor.
Christian book.
I don't know that those came before town meeting, did they?
I know what you call that. I could have missed it.
Yeah.
And, and, and I could have been on the finance committee and we were involved in all sorts of things that it never came to front in town. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure it was the subject of much discussion and there was, there's an extensive report, uh, given to New England Bio Labs, which they've subsequently furnished to Allen.
Yeah, um, that's, that's what's really, what really tipped the balance for us. Well, it's always been on the agenda. We have a seven-year plan that goes forward seven years and every time watershed just sits on top. Uh, and
Open space recreation.
So we've kept track, trying with, with, uh, Gordon Collins to get them to recognize that it's important for the watershed. But, uh, then the master plan came out and said, in effect, if we really, really, really want you to develop the limited commercial district, because we need the money. So we we said, wait a minute, we've been trying to get this into conservation for years and now the town seems to want to do something quite different. So we better get a better fix on this. And so we did, we decided we would dig up all the information we could possibly get, do without spending any money on Gordon, on that, on those woods. And we found that, you know, the topography and the soil, wetlands and the, the whole uh, nine yards physically and also the, um, the benefits of other, be, besides the watershed of saving the land. And, and in the course of that, we came across the fact that New England Bio Labs in the late nineties had joined with Greenbelt and they were going to try to help us all by saving the Hamilton Gordon Woods in Hamilton. And the part of the package called for uh, Bio Labs to locate its new headquarters on the Manchester ward and then save all the Hamilton portion. And, and Bio Labs were going to contribute a million dollars to that effort. So Bio Labs really had a firm commitment to locate its headquarters there. And it had this prior preliminary site analysis done, we learned. And on the basis of that silent site analysis, that's why they quit. They found it just was not working. And that was, you know, that, that told us that how are you going to get a company in there? A major company in there. Bio Labs wanted to build two, two, twenty thousand square feet buildings, two, two-story, so a thousand square foot footprint. Um, and they needed to have the right to build two of them and they couldn't find space for that. Completely do that. So they gave up on it. And it was rough on rebuild because they had to raise the money to save the Hamilton Woods separately, which they did. You know?
We thought the time might be right to, uh, restart those conversations with Gordon at an appropriately high level, you know, more than just a, a Concom member or chair going.
And once we discovered that it really wasn't such a wonderful place as Gordon Collins would have you think to locate businesses, it's been proven now over the last thirty years, two major ones, and we don't know about all the other ones. Uh, come on, really serious and walked away. But why are we so worried about it? It made us feel there's no need to be that worried about it. Um, maybe a smaller firm would go in there, but small firms don't have deep pockets. And they hardly want to be taking that much risk, uh, 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 in the area that has no infrastructure and to build it from scratch. So our feeling was that we would, we would do well to get it, the conservation restrictions if it can be done at a low price. We're not going to pay the kind of money that you would do if it were a major threat to us. It is not. And then, and if they don't want to do that, because they have always maintained that they were going to make money on it, they need to. Um, so if they don't want to go along with that, then at least if we could get a right of first refusal, so that whatever, anything, any little bitty thing or a big thing comes along, we have the option as a town to decide if we want to be the ones to own it or let it be developed. And that way we would be dealing with concrete evidence of what was going to happen on that land. And it wouldn't be such a mystery.
So tonight, there's, we think there's two questions we, we want to put to you. One is, do you agree that it's time to restart these discussions with the goal of restricting the land to minimal or zero development so that it remains clean as a watershed and a recreation, they have it that. And second, what do you recommend as the right course of action? Who, who should take the lead on this? How do we make sure? You know, we make the, the best possible approach to Gordon, uh, not knowing how they're going to respond.
Thank you. Any questions in the board? Becky?
I'm just thinking here, um, I guess I'm trying to understand to your point, what's the risk? Because I agree with the argument that us, you know, a small company doesn't have the deep pockets to build something. They just go red space somewhere else, right? And a big companies have found it not buildable. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what the risk is.
I think the risk is summarized in two words, shing. I think the risk is summarized in two words, shingle place.
By the way, um,
So that, you're saying that's, that's
Not only the memo, but all the material that we relied on to create the memo is on the town website under the Open Space Committee and Watershed Protection.
I'm just not understanding Steve's comment.
This is stuff you're solving.
Helen, if I can continue for a second.
Okay, let's. You asked a question.
Yeah, I'm attempting to answer.
And
I, I think I got a partial answer, but I think Steve had more to elaborate.
One person at a time answer me.
Okay. Thank you. So the recent history of 40B is very clear that developers are orienting their attention, particularly in Eastern Massachusetts, toward environmentally sensitive sites for the simple reason that those are the only sites, large parcels, left in most of the towns east of Worcester. Uh, they're not developable by normal private or public interest because of the marsh and wetland and other concerns, habitat concerns, and vernal pools, all of which exist on this site. However, given the history of 40B, as you know, there's a strong case that developers are entitled to ignore particularly local environmental protections of the wetland regulations. So that would be one of the major risks.
Follow-up question.
Yes.
Um, so the environment, the environmental sensitivity on those parcels, are they really governed by local laws or is it more state and federal? Which 40B doesn't get to plow through.
It's a good question. May I? It's, it's a primarily state law. The Wetland Protection Act is our real shield against these things. And hopefully would protect streams, marshes or bordering vegetated wetland, uh, land subject flooding. But it will not protect all of the resources that are protected under local bylaw, particularly vernal pools. And there are three or four certified vernal pools on this site and several other potential suspected. So those would require local protection. In addition, locally, we have more elaborate and somewhat more extensive protections than you will.
Thank you.
Becky.
No, I, I think I've got a sense of what's being asked. So strange, no.
Becky, go ahead. Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no. I just said strangely, I don't have any questions right now. That was a lot to read and thank you.
Okay. Um, is there any distinction that you would make between residential, i.e. 40B and industrial, commercial? I mean, it's buildings and activity one way or the other, but.
I don't really think so. I'd leave it to Helen to have your opinion. Is there a difference between a proposal that would focus on residential development of that property versus industrial? Either way, it has to be pretty large scale.
It's not zoned presently for residential. If we were to make it so, it'd be interesting. Uh, Gordon College did entertain uh, an applicant to build big housing. I don't know how many units. I don't know. It was big. And they looked at it and said, no. And, but it isn't even zoned for that. And then they went next door and looked at Gordon College's extra land in Wenham. And they even said no to that. So.
Well, if I may.
Wait, I, I think the Manchester land it would be difficult. Part of the problem is it has, I think 70% upland, 30% wetland. That sounds manageable, except that it's interlacing like this.
All up this up, you know.
Yeah.
And very hilly. It's not ideal for anything except what it's doing now. And it would even be an excellent thing for the college to use it to train environmentalists. They have a major concentration in environmental science. And they have this wonderful opportunity here with, with all the wetlands and the rare species and the whole bit.
Well, I have to believe they've been exploring for some time how to monetize this. Things haven't worked out at this point. Uh, to the residential thing, I know that our MBTA group is looking all around town and I'm sure they're looking up there as well as to what might be doing. And of course, a lot of zoning kind of gets put aside when they decide to put something out there. And I don't know what they're going to come up with. But that may be on their radar somewhere. The risk right now, it seems to me, is pretty low. Nothing, nothing much has happened here. I think that the situation with Shingle Hill is a little bit different here. Here we're dealing directly with our watershed. It's right next to Gravely Pond. Shingle Hill is a little bit further away. But this is really very proximal to, to, uh, what's, what's, you know, our, our water, water source. So.
May I add one?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, Gordon negotiated a deal with a major home builder last summer to build some number of senior housing. I think the designation was luxury senior housing off Grapevine Road by Koi Pond. So just beyond Gordon, if you're driving up Grapevine toward Hamilton. Uh, and that sounded like a potential low eight-figure payout to Gordon. That's what they said at the time. Um, we're told by Chuck Dam, who's a water commissioner, water and sewer commissioner in Wenham, that that deal has been scuttled. Primarily because Wenham doesn't have capacity either to supply drinking water to a sizable development, industrial or residential, nor do they have any sewage connections. And it would be very difficult to put a septic, large-scale septic facility in that area. This is Manchester land we're talking about. So the scarcity of water in Amel, in Wenham is not an issue. Uh, but it's still land that like Shingle Hill is not served by any of our septic.
Okay.
Uh, what I'm hearing is trying to regress a problem that doesn't exist here. Right? And it seems nature is taking care of the problem here. And you've had, if knowing the Bio Labs with all their resources and who wants to be steward, not on my self-simply, has decided that they can't make this happen. I don't, I think that I'm reluctant to tell a landowner what they kind of kind of do, I, I, you know. And then the only other issue is that it brought up a meeting uh, last, last week is that I don't want to hamstring future generations. God only knows what in 30 years, what it's going to look like and what we need for housing or what we need for development. I think we should make sure it takes course. Uh, everything I've heard so far is that it can't be, it doesn't look like it's economically feasible uh, to develop this at this point. I'm, I'm reluctant to even go into that. That's just me.
Thank you. Um, I would think of the, Helen, pardon? Would you like to be, would you like to be heard? Thank you. Go ahead.
I think the sewage, you see, may need to do any development there. And housing takes more sewage than commercial. Is that right?
Generally.
Generally speaking.
Oh, you said housing.
This is something we have to face up to with the, any development in a limited commercial. And if it might take a sewage production. The, the soil is not appropriate for toxic systems.
I'm not sure. That responds to Brian's concern. I'm have a request question. How much do you think this would cost? And what other fu- what funding sources could you find for it? And please, one of you decide to answer and I will hear from the other one later.
How much a CR would cost?
Yes, that's the question.
Yeah, I think that's something we have, we would definitely want to get a handle on before we talk to them. I have been thinking to ask the MECT to fund it. Not at full appraisal, but an opinion of value by a reliable firm that does the conservation lands.
You were considering asking.
We just, we haven't even talked about it yet.
You're considering asking the Conservation Trust what to do with the evaluation of what the conservation restriction is likely to cost.
Likely to cost. And of course, we're not committed to a conservation restriction. We're going to ask them and talk to them about it when we have some idea of how much is reasonable to spend on it. And then see if they agree and then see if we can raise the money. By no means a done, done deal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Just quickly, you know, the basis of a CR is generally the value of the rights that you're abandoning, which would be the development rights. Given what we know about this property, we don't think that they're substantial in economic terms. So rough guesstimate, this comes from conversations with Patrice Murphy at MECT is a quarter to a half million dollars would be for 155 acres put under CR would be a market rate. Now, whether that's sufficient to whet the appetite of Gordon College, who knows? It's not as though we want to walk in and make an offer. We want to explore it.
Okay, you were asking for the chairs of four major committees?
Yeah, to meet once or twice.
Yeah. Um, is your goal to have us, that, that, that committee to talk with each other or to talk with Gordon College?
Um, I thought it would be most effective to have whoever goes to Gordon College be speaking on behalf of the Select Board, the FINCOM, Planning Board, the ZBA and the Concom at the minimum. So that it isn't simply a matter of, wouldn't this be a good idea? And if you're interested, we'll take it upstairs to the town leaders. It would be from the town leaders. Uh, I think that's one of the things that has been missing from the conversations with Gordon.
That I'm sure.
Yes.
Um, so I really appreciate the work that this team is doing to keep this at the forefront. I, I feel like, like you said, perhaps more data needs to be collected before we take another step. You know, how much would potentially, all the things you listed, how much potentially would the conservation restriction, uh, cost? I just, it does feel just a bit premature. I'm not sure what other type of information might be necessary. I mean, I'm very visual, so I want to see, you know, the plot plans. Here's what we're talking about, you know? I just feel it might be a little premature, but that's just my.
And if, oh, sorry, Becky and John, I'm going to step on you. Please go ahead.
Sorry, I just, um, my question to Steve and Helen, are they looking for a solid commitment right now or are they trying to see um, if the Select Board would be interested in getting behind this? Are they just trying to get a, a, a temperature read of the Select Board?
Steve, is this a temperature read or are you asking?
Well, I think we were proposing you answer those two questions. Is, is this actually a goal you'd like to pursue? And if so, would you be willing to convene? And for counterparts of several other committees in order to decide what could we take to Gordon College? It's a simple, simple question.
Yeah, okay. Everything has a price. And if you sit on the finance, finance committee, you know what that number is going to. I think it's kind of tough. I, I am interested, Helen, you said the MECT, who is really, really, I mean, there are people that are pretty experienced about this. This is really a core focus of theirs. And I would go the MECT and say, this is what we're thinking about in your experience. What's involved and, and what's the number? We're sitting here and I, you know, we have no idea, but I can tell you hundreds of thousands of dollars is a lot of money. Excuse me, yes.
Yes, yes, whenever you're ready.
And you know that, that's right. And I'm curious and obviously there can be outside money that's involved. But I, I, I think we've got to get a handle on where that is. We can't sit here and judge that right now.
And if I may.
I certainly.
Becky, Becky.
All right.
Um, I, I, I think that, um, it's very difficult to put a price on something that is invaluable as, um, as is our drinking water and therefore what's around it. Um, but I do think before we are um, asked to commit, we, we do need to know a little bit more. I don't think this is something that should be on the slow boat. I think we need to get some in- information more quickly than slowly, if possible. Thank you.
Becky, could you just be a little more specific about what information, I mean, if we're going to ask?
What, what is we be asking the town, townspeople to support? Um, more finite numbers? What exactly, what areas exactly we would be protecting? Um, I think distill it down to bullet points as best as possible to, um, provide more information to the townspeople as well as us. Does that answer your?
Thank you. That's very clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I?
Yes. There's a hand up. Oh, there is a hand up.
Yeah, and two of your committees that you've appointed have vetted this very thoroughly. There's extensive documentation, maps of all of the properties, delineation of the 155 acres, documentation of the past 30 years of history of attempts to develop. It's all available to you. If you want, it's been made available to the public, as Helen said, on the town website and in our open meetings. So I applaud your desire to get, roll up your sleeves and get all of this underneath your fingernails, but I'm telling you, you may not actually need to do that. That's why you appoint these other specialized committees, I believe.
Just to clarify.
Anne.
Becky first, yes.
All right. Um, Steve, if I, if I may direct Steve and, I mean, directly, okay. Um, I think, Steve, what I'm saying is that to provide information that, that boils it down, not, not pages and pages and documents on Dropbox that some people may or may not be able to access. Um, I think we've been hearing more and more that people want us to as easily as possible, distill the information down. So as close to being able to provide that as possible, the numbers, exactly what's being done. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that, that for, people are asking us to do that as opposed to just saying the information's online, go dig. That's what it should be. People should go dig. But we are being asked to distill.
Thank you. Yeah, so, um, I may just, I, I'm, I agree with Becky. It's not that I'm closed to this concept. Um, but I'd like a nice executive summary with the pictures. Here's what we're looking at. Here's what we're proposing. Here's the, you know, what Becky said, which land, how much? I, I don't want to have to dig through Dropbox, um, to try and look through all the details to figure out for myself what's going on. I would like the more executive summary.
John.
Yeah, and Steve, you said, I, I, I don't think there's any much in the way of reinventing the wheel here. You are right. I know that the water, that the task force, the water task force painted a picture there. It's just section five or whatever it is. I think that we'll say this is what the story is all around Gravely Pond. And I know it touches on certainly on, on Gordon. I don't know what other reports there are, but certainly.
Well, if I may, we did send you a, what we thought was a fairly concise, I think, two-page summary of this proposal with the facts on it. And if that's too much information, maybe you could give us an example of what you're looking for with bullet points and such, but I don't want to keep misfiring. Have you come up short on data?
So if I may, one of, yeah, so I, I read through the two pages and there were some attachments in the Dropbox. That, that's really what I'm looking. I understand the story here, but I, I'm visual. I just, sorry, that's the best way I can describe it. Um, and I don't feel that we, I didn't see any dollars in here. We discussed that verbally. So did that, you know, like the cost of the conservation um, restriction? So, you know, here's your, here's your, what you're looking to conserve, right? Victorially, here's what we think it'll cost. Here's where we think the money will come from. There's a time Victorally, here's what we think it'll cost. Here's where we think the money will come from. There's a timeframe we think, you know, that kind of outline is what I'm looking for. And it, I think it's buried in here. I think it's in there, but, um, it's, it's not following to the surface, I guess.
We can certainly try that. Um, I'm sure we would be speculating about a fair amount of that, but if you want us to.
I, I, yes, um, I'm not hearing wild enthusiasm for this proposal with this moment here. And I just as soon as I take a vote or have a vote, um, yes, Mrs. Beckham.
They should have pointed out when we're talking about money. The state very much Commonwealth of Massachusetts wants very much for watershed land to be protected. And they will provide half the money. So it may be a large number, but it's half the money that the town would be required. And we can also look to M E C T for assistance. We didn't mean to carry it that far at this point. At this point, we really just wanted to let you know that we disagree strongly with the master plan saying that that land should be developed. I, I'm not, we were not making a statement about the entire limited commercial district. We're just talking about that particular piece of land. We've looked hard at it now and we say, no way this is going to be developed. Except maybe with some screwy out of the blue, you know, forty B, another forty B. On top of the one we're already dealing with and, and Hamilton is facing one now too in the watershed there.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that even the Housing Authority wants all of these things going on at the same, same time.
I would submit.
At any rate.
I would submit.
At this point, all we're doing is saying it's not developed.
Thank you. Chair?
My turn.
Sarah Melish's hand, had her hand up for quite.
I'm sorry, I, I don't see, did, yes.
I thought you were gonna finish the board first, so.
Okay. Um, but the Brian.
To your point, as far as the state wanting to protect the watershed. The state's got, uh, state is very, very adamant about us developing housing as well. So we, as, as long as that site does lend some possibilities, I, I don't think we can take it out of the inventory until such time as it's, it's dismissed. And that's what I'm electing to do. Right now, we have a ticking time bomb right now. Okay, with the, uh, the new zoning and we cannot, I, I, I don't think we can, uh, afford to take anything off the table at this point. Now, to your point, you keep telling me it's undevelopable. Okay, so let, let's let, let's see what plays out.
Um, Sarah Melish?
Thank you. Sarah Melish, eleven Bennett Street. I'm also a member of the N B A, um, N B T A zoning task force. And I think the question I have is, is there a possibility for twenty-two acres of the site to be considered developable and doesn't need to be conserved? Um, for, um, watershed purposes, whether or not actually can be developed doesn't matter. But we're look, the N B T A task force is looking for an area of land outside of the half-mile perimeter that could give us twenty-two acres, which we could zone for potential um, fifteen units per acre, whether or not they're actually developed. And it was, if it's possible to carve that out, I think that might be a win-win for everyone and conserve the balance of it. Thank you.
I'd like to respond slightly to that. Um, when you say we, it's the town meeting that can rezone. Um, and, and on any individual or group represented and here. And, and I know you all know that, but for the imaginary audience, I thought I'd better make that clear. So currently it is zoned for industrial, commercial, and it would require a town meeting vote to change it to be used for, um, housing except for a forty B and since I'm being pedantic, um, we are, I think, not meeting, we have not met our housing quota. I think we can be approached by another forty B. So if that were to happen, that would be outside of, of our local zoning. It's um, we're not closing the door. Um, I think you understand what some of us would like to see, not all of us. Why am I looking? Um, and, and we'd like to hear from you again, but, um, the answer is, you have said it's not developable. So we don't see the urgency right now. And not seeing the urgency and having many of us quite a bit to do. We would just as soon not get together and talk to Gordon College right now. Is that fair?
Thanks for your time.
You're very welcome. Thanks for your time and. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, do you want to talk to this or shall we just? Senior proposal, you've seen the proposal. It's all, it's all you. I can answer questions.
So I think some, some key questions for you. You know, in terms of, in terms of the resident sticker, beach sticker question. So a few years back, we went to no distinction between the two. It was just a resident sticker that was valid uh, all through, through town in that instead of buying a beach sticker, you had to buy the tags. There's been a little bit of pushback on that. Um, some feel that the the ease of the resident sticker allowing anyone to park it and singing beach has added some some, uh, more demand for parking at the beach. We don't have any hard numbers on that. I don't know how true that is. Um, it's sort of anecdotal. We don't have really hard, hard data on that, of. But that, that has been a concern in terms of the, uh, uh, ease of operation. From a logistical point of view, it's certainly easier to, to distribute the, the resident sticker to everybody. And then for those who want to go to the beach, they, they buy their tags at the beach. So that has, that has provided a more efficient process for, for handling the, the stickers. You know, it's, it's, it's a logistically, it's a lot to do. Just in terms of, you know, we have five over five thousand cars that all need their stickers, you know, do two-thirds of them want, want a beach sticker. You know, in the past, I think we, we had like three, three thousand plus beach stickers. So we, we're, we're constantly looking for ways to, to try to make the system more efficient. Uh, because it does take up, it can take up considerable staff time. Uh, and again, sort of trade-offs.
If I could, yes, it was my recollection that when we made this change, that part of the reason for it was efficiency and there was actually a cost savings that was to come with it. But the first year we implemented it, there was a hiccup and the stickers didn't get sent out together with something else. I don't know if it was the excise tax bills or something. They had to be a separate mailing, so it wound up costing us more money. So I'm, I'm trying to understand if there's an efficiency, where is the efficiency? And did we correct that first hiccup from the first year?
Well, so the, uh, we're, we're not realizing a dollar savings. Uh, we are realizing a savings in staff time. We basically outsourced the distribution of the stickers.
Okay.
Uh, we thought there would be a dollar savings there, but that didn't materialize because the vendor was asking for, for more than we anticipated.
So I guess the question though is, is the only way we could have outsourced it by having one type of sticker instead of two? Cause that I, I, I think that's what people were pushing back on to your point, right? Was it not possible to outsource? It and.
I think we couldn't do it that way, no.
I don't think so.
Couldn't people just request and the vendor supplies it?
How are they gonna request it? If the stickers go out free and then your excise tax, wait a box.
But so we would have to basically do a, uh, a, uh, an online request for which sticker they want, right? I'm sorry.
They have to have someone paying for the, if we're going to charge for the beach sticker.
I, I just, I'm trying to understand. It sounds like we, we anticipated that there would be certain costs, efficiency, efficiencies and cost savings. The cost savings did not materialize, but the efficiencies did because you were, it's a simple process that you could outsource. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you say so, right?
Yeah, so, so I have a question. I guess it kind of gets to this and Diane, you probably know the number. Uh, and by the way, I was surprised. You said in the past, it's been about three thousand beach stickers for the cars.
Right.
But everybody had to show up at Diane's window.
You had three, three thousand people showing up.
Now, now I'm looking at the data here and it's five thousand vehicles in town or something like that?
No.
Okay, so a lot more. In other words, two thousand people. I never drive to the beach, whatever reason, so I don't.
Yeah, well, there may be.
But nevertheless, now, now people have to show up for beach stickers. And you track or do you know, I, I, obviously the time must be less because there aren't as many people showing up for beach stickers as there were for cars, because that's time out of your day. When you have to deal with that and it's, that, that number I assume has gone down, but is that a metric that you follow at all and?
Um, the number has gone down pri- prior, all stickers, any sticker you had to came to, come to the window. Whether you're purchasing a resident, a beach sticker or a resident sticker just for use in parking and transportation. So you're talking five thousand people coming for stickers regardless of the two. At this point, five thousand stickers are mailed. So that doesn't include the people who don't have their primary home here or they got a new car or all that stuff, so that I don't count how many those are.
The edge cases. The edge cases.
Yeah, those extras. But it's very, it's a very simple process and it's not as time-consuming.
I'm just curious, so how many beach stickers did you issue now? Tags, that's what I'm talking about. Not the word, I'm talking tags.
The tags have been taken over by Parks and Rec. So you buy your tag at the beach, basically. Yes.
I would say that it's a learning curve here.
Yeah, I, I guess so. You're right. It's getting less and less.
I think it's I'd give another year anyway. I mean, it's, the, the, the people now know what to expect. Uh, there's a lot of pushback because we like the little colored stickers. But I think that, um, the, uh, and I don't know what, keep the sterile sites. Do you have any, any thoughts of this at all?
What Greg said, I think that it's increased the traffic flow at the beach. I know of two different occasions where I personally saw four cars from one family in the beach.
There's that. And then there are instances where for some strange reason, people still getting stickers who moved out of town.
That's difficult to follow. Because they technically they're required by, when you move out of town and can uh, change your address, you know, the registration, you have to notify thirty days to change your address, but that's secondary enforcement. This where we would just stop for people.
Maybe I misunderstood. Talking about people who move out of town during the year or are you talking about people who move out of town?
Two years.
And continue to get stickers.
The car is still registered.
They don't change their address.
The registration still remains with us.
There's a, a right reason that it's insurance rates.
Insurance. But I, I don't think we should design a process to accommodate people who may be not following the law. Um, I, I, right, so I, I think we gotta focus on the efficiency and what works best, but I do think that we need to consider the traffic volume. Um, cause that was one of the concerns that the residents have raised, that just giving everybody a sticker that can get you onto the beach into the beach parking lot is creating more traffic problems. This year was a rainy year, so.
But on good, those, those shoulder weekends, the place was packed.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I, I I do, I wish we had some data other than anecdotal.
When we had the beach stickers that we're talking about on those hot days, it would be packed.
That is true, but I, I feel.
I'll, I'll catch up with you. As opposed to everyone pounding to one car to go to the beach.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Right. It, it, you did have lines, but they didn't seem to, anecdotal again, um, they didn't seem to form until later in the morning. Um, or in the afternoon. The, the timing, it's, it seems like it's happening earlier now. That was just my perception. Um, so I was wondering whether the residents have a point that just issuing everybody a sticker that can get you onto the beach. Um, that, that might be causing some problems and we may not have hit the the worst of it because we had such a rainy year. So I am wondering.
And if I may. But if, if a resident is entitled to that sticker, why shouldn't they get it?
I think the question is whether we might want to put, restrict the resident sticker to everything but singing beach and have some other process for getting an additional decal that lets you into singing beach.
Right, and I, I understand that, but, but a resident is a resident and resident should have access to singing beach.
Absolutely.
I, I'm just, I, I understand the convenience of this, of, of the stickers going out with the excise taxes. I, I agree with Brian that let's give it some more time.
No, we, we don't have enough data. I agree.
I, I agree. I don't think we have enough data to make a change, but it would be nice if we could get some data out of this upcoming season.
What data do you want specifically?
Um, no. Well, I mean, like I said, I noticed a change, or I thought I noticed a change again, um, in the time when the line forms, like, um, whether it's at eleven AM or one PM, you know, if the line starts to form at eleven AM, that's different than if the line starts to form at one PM, right? So when I, when I was first here, I was a part-time resident, so I would actually come from my other town to get here and I could come as late as eleven or twelve and get onto the beach on a sunny day. Um, this year, my son tried to get onto the beach at eleven AM and he returned the car and walked, so he, he couldn't get in the parking lot. So I have noticed a change. Um, is that something that Parks and Rec can, when does a line form? I'm thinking as a simple piece of data.
They could, they could track that.
Anne, if I may?
Certainly.
Um, I am not asking for more data. I, I, I think that, um, this mess, method of providing stickers is a, is a good method. I think we need to, before we change this method though, give it a little more time. But I'm not, I, I'm not looking for, for numbers. I think the numbers are so variable. Um, primarily based on, on weather. But it's, as long as I've lived in town, it's, it gets packed at times, not always, but it get, and I think we've all witnessed that. So I think that, um, I'm not sure that the correlation to I'm not sure that the correlation to. Stickers being sent out with. The excise tack. Tax bills is. A real uh valid one.
What about the um, the questions I had, the the question Greg raised to start the conversation? Um. And I even think it's on the list here to be discussed, but I I had a another item highlighted, which is kind of related. Um, there was a section in this policy, so this is this document that you gave us is is the proposed. Policy, because now we don't have this information in the bylaw, was there something like this that? Already existed that we're just changing here or we're. Discussing proposed changes to it, was there already a policy, is is this the?
Pretty much mimics what you've been doing, right?
Yes. Well, was there a written, was there a written policy?
Yes, that was posted that the residents could look at.
Yeah. We, when we approved. When you approved. That mailing and stickers, et cetera, et cetera, all that other information was the same, basically the same.
But was it posted, I guess is my question.
It's on the website.
It was on the website, okay. So the the question I had, which gets to the volume issue we're discussing. Is there's a section in here on non-resident property owners? And I'm trying to understand how um. There's a section in here about them only getting one sticker or something, so we're we're limiting. It was on the very first page, sorry, non-resident property owners. One sticker may be issued to a non-resident who owns. Property, I'm trying to understand how do you define a non-resident property owner? Why are they only getting one sticker? And and if a resident owns five cars, all. Five cars can get onto the. Into singing beach parking lot, you know what I'm saying, I'm I'm looking, I'm looking at the volume issue.
But I don't live here, the assumption is you're renting it out. So therefore the rent is giving stickers and. You're allowing one sticker for the property.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, how you define non-resident, because I have neighbors or even myself, you know, when I had. This property first, I was not renting out my unit, I was just using it on the weekends and. Like. I was able to get a sticker for every car that I had, which was two cars, it was a two-car family. I have a neighbor who is a snowbird, she lived here for many years, but now spends more time in another state. So she can't vote here, but she doesn't rent out her unit, so I'm trying to understand how we're defining. Non-residents and I want to be careful about impacting snowbirds or.
The plan, yeah, so that that is a change, so in.
Okay.
So it was written was non-resident. Would have to, there would be those extra people, they have to come and show. He's a car, which is normally not registered here and something that ties them to the house. It never said one or or there was never a number there.
So that was my, that was my, but it does say right above it, was it no, um.
That's great, good that one.
Yeah, so I, what my point is that I think that. There are some other changes in here, like the page two or, yeah, page two here. Outlines four things that were being asked to make decisions on because there were changes. And my point is, I think there are other things that are being changed and I don't have the old policy. To refer to, I happen to know about this one because I lived it and I knew the process was different. But I'm just wondering, are there other things that were being asked to change? Um, which we should consider. Carefully.
Yes, I I, that was a question and Greg, Greg, I asked him how this is interpreted, can he interpret it as one? We never did it that way because it's too hard for actually for us to figure out. We already give, you know, Joe Smith. When you submit one card, two cards, so we have never done that. But Greg's understanding of the said that it was one, so that was a change that was. Was made and not had.
Like I said, I just, I mean.
I mean, I apologize for that.
Yes.
Sorry. Oh. Was it? There's, there is a change from. Resident, non-residence.
It was unclear, so we, we asked us, well, it seems like if. I was making the assumption that most, most. Non-resident homeowners are renting them out. But that. You know, there's, there's, there's all kinds of scenarios and we're not going to capture everybody. And then you then, you know, if you want to change that, that that's that's a policy change, that's that you can make, that's why we're reviewing it, I don't. Trying to think of other changes here from past practice.
So the. Other one, but we had discussed this previously and when we discussed the warrant, we changed the bylaw around the visitor parking placards. So that um.
Um, hidden clothes. Okay, I'll see you in a little bit.
Um. So I I just think that this, there are. There are some changes that we've already approved when we updated the bylaw, one of those is the visitor parking. So those are very, they were very tight before you had the street name on it. Um, and you could only. Have a visitor park on your street, you know, so we're widening. The usage of visitor parking, which we already decided to do that, so I just. I think there's a volume concern that I have and I'm not doing a real good job of articulating it.
It would be helpful if we highlighted.
Everything that's different, yeah, I just, I think it's a real sensitive subject and we got a lot of questions. While we had the Q and A session, so I just feel uncomfortable with not being very clear. What was it like in twenty twenty-three and what's it going to be like in twenty twenty-four, that's. That's how I can best describe my discomfort. I don't feel anything was wrong, you know, per se, just. I just. I have discomfort.
Certain, I know, so what I understand. That maybe you, we need a little bit more. Highlighted, this is, this was a proposed change, et cetera, et cetera. The real question that I I I need answered to move forward. Which we somewhat made in the bylaw change. Bylaw did say it went from June first to May thirty-first. And we took that out and we just said it would be annual sticker. I think it would be more efficient to do the stickers. From a calendar year. So if you approve, if you are okay with doing a January to December sticker. Then it would just be a twenty forty-four sticker, not a forty-four, forty-five sticker, and when does it leave? That that would be helpful and that I would need to know sooner rather than later, just so that I could get the process rolling. The other issues we can certainly. I can. Do you need to send me a more? Detailed.
Yeah, so your, your copy just says one year now, it doesn't say calendar year.
Right, the bylaw says annually, yes.
It says our ballot for one year.
Right.
A calendar year, I agree, and there are people that come in, who knows what time of the year, like one year, I got twelve months, oh, you don't. Eventually December thirty-first, whenever you showed up.
I think we said that. It would expire on the date of the sticker. Not for a.
Bylaw, yes.
Because that means we got some, you gotta get really get close to look at those stickers.
Their color.
I, if I, if I could. Um, I believe what Diane is asking, so you're correct about the bylaw, the way we changed the bylaw, we made it. Um, so that we could have these discussions without a town meeting to decide the expiration date, and I think Diane is asking us, okay. Now, what do you want for that expiration date? Is it May thirty-first or is it December thirty-first, is that what you're asking? She's asking us to pick the.
And we're not here really like December thirty.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm here.
December thirty.
If I may.
That, that, yes.
Um, the town runs on. The. The July to June. Correct?
Yes.
So why, why would we not have the stickers do the same, I I just think if all of our. Um. Financial.
Here in the middle of the summer. That's, that's a problem.
Ah, okay, there you go, thank you, that's, that's.
Problem.
What I wanted, yep, no, that's a good, it's logical. Um, and I know you're still asking the board, but I did want to point out Sarah.
You're right, you're right.
Keep this true. I think that it, that's the original stickers of May thirty-first were. Yeah, coincided with the things that resident parking is.
Well, it's on the signs, well, it's. It's May first on the signs.
So it gave you that thirty days to get.
Right, it's correct.
But that was the reason, I don't have an issue, I wouldn't have to.
So Sarah Melish, how's your head up this month?
Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah Melish, eleven Bennett. Um, so I've lived in town not as long as most of you, twenty-three years. And I used to have no problems. Parking at the beach. Um, I now can't get on the beach after ten AM, it during the week. Um, and when you talk about efficiencies, I ordered two beach tags or three beach tags online. And I had to go into the town clerk to pick them up, I easily could have paid for a separate beach sticker. At that point in time and it would not have adversely impacted. The efficiency or I could have paid for that online and picked it up the town clerk. I would have no issue with paying a hundred dollars a year to have the right to park at singing beach. And the, the, you know, I I can't lug my, I can't walk. A mile from my home to lug all my beach stuff to go to beach. So the fact that you're opening it up for people with five cars and one house. Um, to all park on the beach and Sunday afternoons. All the kids come, one per car, that that I think that it makes sense to charge. Extra apart at singing beach, thank you.
Okay. Let's see if I can summarize where we are, we would like to see. More clearly expressed the changes between this year's policy and the proposed policy. We also probably need to make up a line pretty soon if we're going to have the sticker start on Jan- January first.
But but again. Enforcement is only started in May, so.
You can put that on a mail list, stickers out.
Yeah, it's. Sure, it'd be nice to have that decision sooner or later, but it's not. It's not a make or break.
Um, are you, you. Yes, Diane said it was important to you. You have.
We're going to distribute them with.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to distribute it with the excise tax, the the. That goes out in late January.
Yes, but you have to order the stickers and and do all that stuff, it doesn't go, and if I may clarify, it doesn't go out with the bills. That was a misconception, it goes out based on the bills, if you get a excise tax bill. You will get a sticker.
So efficiency is not necessarily part of that picture, before, I think we had the idea that you were mailing a bunch of stuff together, kind of saving on mailing or something.
Efficiency is I'm not doing.
I understand that, the staffing, but okay.
The staffing is not doing it, it's coming. From, from the vendor. And if I just may add, if we could keep it that way through the elections of twenty twenty-four. And decide what kind of data, what actually we need. That would be. A good idea, rather than trying to make a change during the elections of twenty twenty-four, which will be very busy. And I'm sorry, I'm. As I told. So, ah, okay. You, the presidential election? Well, I'm thinking president.
Prior.
Very. Okay, fine, you're done. Every TA. We have elections in May, we have elections here.
All right.
Right, no, I'm thinking twenty twenty-four as an election year. Um. A little bit more intense than twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-two, then. It would be. Basier in the town clerk's office.
I can have a question?
Yeah.
Um, logistics, um, so the beach tags, I ordered those online and they were mailed to me. So I'm trying to understand. If to Sarah's point, is it? Extra work? To request a sticker versus a tag? Because the sticker is produced by an outside party, is that why it makes it more difficult?
So the tags.
I understand the staff.
This year, because the year before, people claimed that their tags were stolen through the mail. So we held the tags, that's why you had to come pick them up.
Okay.
At my office for the beach.
Okay.
I remember that.
Okay.
Question of the.
Oh. So people who want to go to the beach have to come to the town clerk's office anyway.
Thank you.
Because you're holding on.
They'll be able to pick them up at the beach, Parks and Rec will be selling them, and I believe they will go back to.
Somewhere, so they have to pick. Them up anyway.
We have something this year where you could get a. Low-priced walk-on tag if you went to the town clerk. If you ordered it online, if you ordered it online.
Okay.
And then I believe the plan with Parks and Rec is to do that again with your permission and have them mailed.
Actually scary. What happens if we mailed everyone? The a a residence sticker, then if they came to town. And they wanted to. Buy.
Exchange.
Exchange or scrape it out of the window and put a beach sticker in there.
Just put a new.
Put it.
Secondary sticker.
Or a secondary sticker, whatever.
Secondary.
Okay.
Put a little blue dot on, I mean, something that is not.
Because that's how they used to be, this, the uh, the beach sticker always had, you used to tear off the bottom of the uh.
Yeah.
Of the residence sticker, to make a residence sticker, or you left the beach tag on the bottom.
So why can't you do that online?
Um, yes, you buy the stickers on a memorial.
Probably you don't want to sell. The parking, the additional parking at the beach, because people would get you, the person by. Selling them would need to know whether the person was actually a resident. And I don't think that's a decision that those parking clerks ought to make.
And also younger, it's typically younger people down there, they should not be in and. Some, some. Of the people who go to the beach are not always the kindest. Get a little grumpy.
And I want to ask, and cheaply would know, historically, they have been sold on Memorial Day weekend. Uh. It's. Do you, we have any problems then? I don't, I don't think maybe, maybe Cheryl doesn't want that, any scenario aggravation, but it's, this has been a precedent set. That on Memorial Day weekend, if you were late, you could buy your stickers on the beach.
Sticker or walk-ons?
Beach sticker.
Okay.
Oh.
Big pack.
Prior.
Prior, okay.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. Um, I think we need to answer Diane's question on the expiration. Um, I. Personally. Would like. More time to think about whether or not we want to make this one sticker. Allowing everybody on the beach, just because I I I do think we have a volume problem and I'm concerned we could make it worse. But I want to make sure we get Diane the information that she needs tonight, I don't want to lose sight of that. And is there a, is there a? Uh, since enforcement doesn't begin on resident parking until May, is there a concern about going back to the May thirty-first? Expiration date? Or? You know, I'm just trying to understand, because I, we we got the December date by accident.
Right.
Is there a? Sometimes accidents are good and sometimes just an accident, we should go back to it the way it was, I'm trying to understanding, so understand what the benefit is.
You're right, it was an accident and that's what brought that idea to light to go calendar year. The other op, the other reason to go calendar year is what I'm told is the excise, the best excise tax extraction. Of the list comes out in December, January. And then if we wait until April or so to mail it, there's a lot of changes in the registry at that point. Whereas, so it would be a cleaner mailing is what I'm told. I. On that matter, not really. I have a concern, if we are considering. Changing the rules for the resident sticker, to say that the resident sticker gets you parking everywhere except singing beach. And then having a second, I don't want to mail out stickers. And then. Change the rules on people after they've got their sticker on, I I think that would not be what we seek. So.
And I do have some other questions on. Um, placards and some other things, so do we need to just? As as Kathy said. Try to make a date decision and then revisit the other aspects?
I just had, but we're still on the beach thing. We mentioned, you know, how crowded the parking is or is not at Singing Beach. And I think Parks and Rec needs to have their, the folks who are, who are, uh, checking the cars that come into the parking lot. Should take down eleven o'clock, two o'clock, five o'clock, how many cars in the parking lot? That's all, every day. I, I've been down there several times this past summer, and I would always ask the guys there, so how's the parking been going and what's your opinion in general, the season? There is not one of them, they're always new guys, you know, new people that are sitting there. There is not one that has said, there's been any problem, Monday to Friday, any day they've been there. They've always been able to, they've always been open spots. Some of the weekend days, there've been problems, you know, with backups, but they never had. To a person, to a person, nobody ever said eleven o'clock on Friday or on Thursday, oh, it's, it's backed up. So I, I think we need some hard data on that, and it's not hard for those people to. You know, they know how many slots there are, and I, we don't need an exact number, within five percent is fine. So, but that's easy data collect.
Yeah, to that point, maybe if we, I hate kicking this down the road, but maybe Cheryl should be here.
You originally suggested that, that it's partly a question of people getting used to it. Perhaps we could go this year, send the stickers out in January. And, and leave the, make them good for the, for Singing Beach. Collect the data this year. If necessary, if appropriate, make the change next year. And then have, have, have the stickers run January one to December thirty first. Is that?
Data, I, I do think we need to revisit these other changes.
Yes, uh, because we revisit the other changes after we have a document that shows what's changed. And I don't, and that, this is all stuff that doesn't happen in the winter, so.
And it would be good to add that to our action list to revisit this in. You know, early October, not kick the can, let's, let's deal with it while it's fresh in our mind, as opposed to. You know. September, September, that'd be great.
Okay, um. I would take a motion to check, to make the stickers. One from Janu- from January first to December thirty first. And the stickers be good at all part hours of the parking areas including Singing Beach. Now I have a motion.
You have a motion, I'd like to amend that slightly. Uh, say Singing Beach at all, at all beaches. You know, cuz white beach in theory is also. And so, in, in fact, I would kind of, uh, people use the word singing beach, but I would, in, in place of that, if you're good at singing beach, you're good at all, all beaches. And just use the term.
Okay.
So they know, Tux Point, White, it's all.
So the, the move, the, the motion that I'm looking for, except when we phrase, is that. We send out resident speak, resident stickers that run from January first to December thirty first and are good at all beaches and. Parks.
Second.
Okay. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay, um, I think.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Can we take up other placards, or we can take up other placards?
When we take up other?
We're coming back.
We're coming back.
To resident stickers and.
Parking placards.
Parking placards in general, could be part of your next discussion.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, which brings us to the compensation study.
Um, so, I just, I wanted to, before we move on, there were four items that Greg. And asked us to look at, um, I just wanna make sure there was nothing else. Critical that you needed for tonight. About long-term parking.
Because I think we'll have the same question about what's different, if anything, that we have on the, on the rest. We have, you know, the compensation study.
I apologize for not having a full report. But the, the. Especially that I was able to, it's about to, I don't know if people have a chance to look at that yet, but again, I'm not looking for a deep dive, but basically. Where this is going is a recommendation to create. Um, four or five groupings for department heads, and then create pay ranges for each of those groupings. Um, and then, so once we have that in place, that gives some structure for, um, for the different positions. And groupings based on responsibilities and, and so what the market bears and, and those factors. Um, so if, if we develop that structure, and then we need to discuss how people might move through. The range within a group. Um, and as I mentioned, my, my mental, you know. Typically, it's, it's based on seniority or merit or a combination of both. Um, and I would be happy to, to work with department heads on crafting. Uh, proposal, uh, but it'd be helpful to hear some general thoughts that you might have on what you would prefer to see.
Yeah, so I, I, I have a question, and this is just a one-page that you had here, one paragraph, and I assume the report is more elaborate.
It, it's not an extensive report, it's, it's pretty brief, it's, it's, you know, a handful of pages.
The only question, this is based on what, fifteen, fifteen area towns and cities? Did they break them out in terms of population, like into like three ranges, under ten thousand, ten to twenty, twenty plus?
Um, they didn't, but we certainly can.
I would like that. To know how, how the numbers, cuz I, I, I would suspect they probably vary a little bit.
I mean, your, your bigger communities are, are on the higher end, absolutely, there's no question.
I mean, we're still all living in the same pot here.
What, what we're seeing is that we're competing against those bigger communities, more than, more than we're used to.
Sports or a small market team.
Right.
And you can't pay what the Yankees pay.
Compensation is not just salary.
Correct.
Right, so I do think you need to keep that in mind. Not all town halls are closed on Friday. So, um.
Right, that's why we're looking at hourly, not, not wages, not annual pay.
Right, but when I'm, um.
But that's a, sure, that's perceived.
It's a perk to have a three-day weekend every week, not everybody gets that. Um, so I just think that whatever you'd like to do, we need to. Take into account the totality of compensation and benefits, and so it's not a one.
Right, so we have that as part of the study, you'll see, it has, it has the health benefit percentages that are paid. Has sick days, it has vacation days.
I'm not even talking about financial benefits, maybe the word, I, I don't like to use the word perk, but it's helpful. So for example. Um, one way you can compete with a bigger, um, place that pays more is by allowing people to work from home. Or by, you know, there's other things you can do.
Flexibility, yeah.
Flexibility is big, um, and it doesn't cost anything. So I just would. Ask that we, when we have the discussion, we think of it in, in those terms, not just, um, financial. You had mentioned merit-based before as being one of the options, but that, that also requires a. Different performance management system as a prerequisite, so.
That's what have to be developed if we're gonna go that much.
Right, so I, I think that's all great, I just wanna make sure we consider the, the flexibility, it's really not all about salary.
She fell asleep, she's on the couch.
Sorry, not the couch. Visiting my daughter, and anyway, trying to be in the quietest part of the house.
Oh, do you have any comments on the compensation and, and?
No, I would like to see, I'd like to see as John. Asked the, the, some of the comparisons and how they break out demographic-wise.
I think, uh, again, to that point, me. We, we better off looking because I think some of us look into that small town, we wanna be competitive with a small town. It has, okay. On the rock, but in this area too, also, those are the towns we're looking at. When, probably Brockwood, Essex.
Yeah, those are, those are.
Those become the ones that, all of a sudden, offerings being equal. Was the tipping point, but what become puts, pushes the more of the times. A lot of people don't wanna work in Gloucester.
You said that, Brian.
I don't wanna get into a situation where we're spending two years coming up with a metric. But I think. Some measures of, of merit-based that you. Is merit-based. Compensate.
Compensation, yeah, merit-based, merit pays, no.
I'm a big fan of merit, not step.
Yeah, we don't wanna get into, merit has nothing to do with steps, it's just ranges based on responsibility and. Pay, performance, yeah. Well, the ranges are based on responsibility, and that's the performance is how you move within the range, so, um.
With those being clearly defined.
Based on goals, it's, it's not defined in the compensation, um. Document so much, it's about setting personal goals and achieving those goals and meeting those goals or not. So it's, it's not as clear-cut and, and it requires, so I guess my question would be. Is this just for your directs or is for all non-union staff?
Only other non-union staff or part-time people, so, so it'd be the direct, my direct report.
So this, what we're talking about is for your direct reports, okay? So you would be the only one implementing the. Uh, making the decisions, so it's not any of your direct reports making it, but their direct reports, et cetera.
Well, there. There could be a few in that chat.
Okay.
Less than five.
Okay.
Um, if, if we. Create some assistance, rather than assistant two. That would, that would add to that, so there'd be a few department heads who would have that.
They would have the.
They would, they would need to do a merit.
Yeah, so the way that would work in such a small organization would be they would probably make a recommendation to you. You would be the final arbiter, right? It just involves, changing to this type of system involves a lot of, you know, leadership skills and training and, and some of your directs may. May not have that background that you do.
You have the direction that you need in the line.
So, I'll, I'll keep working on this, and a few more. Find two, there, there are a couple of. So we had the, the, we had some funds, some supplemental funds to, to take care of the union contracts. In that there are a couple of, of the non-union positions that could use an adjustment. So I would like to move forward with a couple of those. We can go details, but your next one. But that's separate from this whole process, but I don't wanna hold that up based on this process.
Used to call that an equity adjustment.
Looking at the agenda, I think we have either postponed or acted on. Everything on the agenda, is there a motion?
I have one question. Short one, and I know you know the answer. Where's Black Earth stand?
Where's Black Earth stand? Uh, they're opening up, they're waiting for the last piece is to get.
Still waiting for a permit?
No, they're waiting for power.
Oh.
They're waiting for National Grid to energize.
Okay, very close.
Very close, they, they, uh, opening the, uh. Transfer station on Wednesday, starting this week. So that'll be open Wednesdays and, and Saturdays now, and, um. They plan to start taking couples as soon as they get that power on. So that's, that's the last piece.
Good, curious.
They, they do, they do need to come back before you to modify the agreement. Additional use of that space up top. That was not part of your original agreement, so that, that will be coming back before you sometime this month.
So I make a motion to adjourn.
Becky?
Oh, yes.
Brian? Kathy?
Yes, and a happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Oh, yeah, it's happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, and yes, that's happy Thanksgiving to all. It's on Wednesday, it's gonna rain.
Okay, eight fifty-seven.